Commissioner Valeri, you will come.
Here.
One answer, Judge.
Pledge allegiance. Testimonial oath of presenters, just to be reminded, anybody that's here today, you are under oath before the Commissioners' Court. 1.6, approval of minutes of regular meeting of April 11, 2023, emergency meeting minutes of April 13, and special meeting minutes of April 17. Motion by Commissioner Du Lacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 1.5, public comments. Is there any public comments, Mr. Garcia?
No.
2.1, approval of bonds.
No actions.
No actions. 2.2, discussion and appropriate action, request the use of the Demet County Rodeo Arena Conference Room for Chicanos por la Casa on May 23, 2023. Ms. Laskin?
Okay.
You're fine. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, my mistake, I didn't care, speaking behalf of Chicanos por la Casa. First and foremost, I just want to commend our grant to behalf of Chicanos por la Casa for allowing our Crystal Spring Center and allowing them to use the rodeo arena for their Gisela Minus event. It was a great turnout, I wasn't there personally, but I heard it was a great turnout. But yes, we're here just to request or for us to allow us to use the rodeo arena. We are scheduling a benefits meeting for all our employees to give them the opportunity to get information and update their benefits package. And it's going to be for May 23.
I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion? Yes, if, in order to utilize the building, there is a fee to use that, I would recommend or suggest that you get in contact with Ms. Lupita Puente, she's over at the rodeo arena, and she can contract with you guys and also set up that day to confirm that that date's available.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much.
And then we're going to go ahead and work the next three and...
2.3, discussion and appropriate action, request the use of the Demet County Rodeo Arena for pre-services on July 31 through August 4. I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Ureda, any discussion?
It's going to be for a separate event, but unfortunately, right now, the event, those dates weren't available. Ms. Regina already spoke with the lady in charge, and she said they're not available.
Correct.
As of right now, we're not going to keep that event for those dates.
Okay. So, are you guys still requesting to use the arena for those pre-services, but a different date, or?
We're going to see if we can, I was going to ask her for different dates and see if we can change it up.
Okay, yes, it's my distinct understanding that those days have already been booked.
Yes.
So again, if you want to advise with Ms. Lupita Puente at the rodeo arena, she can maybe perhaps give you some dates that you can utilize the building.
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No action taken. 2.4, discussion and appropriate action, approval of Demet County Sexual Assault Response Team by annual report as presented.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I come to you before you today, excuse me, to give a biannual report on the sexual assault response team for Demet County. I'm not sure if you are aware, I know that in 2021, there was an appointment of the members for the sexual assault response team by this Commissioners' Court, and what I have here...
Do we have a report on that?
It's going to be a verbal report, but I did bring a copy of the legislation, so that you can familiarize yourself with it. This is Senate Bill 476 that was passed through the 87th legislation session of the State of Texas. And this bill mandates that every county in the State of Texas have a sexual assault response team, a multi-disciplinary team, to provide sexual assault services to victims and survivors of sexual assault, to enhance victim's safety and access to health care and law enforcement services and resources. And so back in December of 2021, because this bill became effective September of 2021, and the members had to be appointed by the end of December, so the agencies that are mandated by this bill to participate is the sexual assault provider for the county, which would be our agency, the Winter Garden Women's Shelter, a representative from the local sheriff's office, the county sheriff's office, and a representative from the police department, if there is a police department in the county, which would be the Carrizo Springs Marshal Office and Demet County Sheriff's Office, the prosecutor's office, which is the office of Mr. Norbert Loserma, a representative from the largest hospital or clinic in the county, in this case would be Demet Regional Hospital, and then a representative from the Behavioral Services Agency, which is Camino Real Community Service. And so the members that were appointed for all of those agencies were myself, Z Flores, at the time it was Sheriff Boyd, but since then, Richard Ramírez has been assigned as his designee. For Carrizo Springs Marshal, it's Arnold Aguilar. The prosecutor's, Mr. Serna, let's see, assigns someone to represent him, he's not available. For the hospital, we have Solchi Garcia and Victoria Sanchez, and for Camino Real Community Services, it's Iris Musquies. And so this bill requires us to submit or to come to Commissioners' Court and give a biannual report on the odd number of years, so this would be the year to give the report. And my report is very brief, I just wanted you to bring me up to date on what this is. And so we met in December, we had our first meeting, and then we met twice again in 2022, and we've met once already in 2023. We are mandated to meet on a quarterly basis, we didn't meet every quarter last year, we only met twice because of conflicting schedules and so forth. And so we have already reviewed and approved our bylaws for the SART, and we are in the process of reviewing and finishing up the policies and procedures for the group. It's a very lengthy document, so it has taken some time. We've had representation from every agency at our meetings, other than that we're still not at the point where we're discussing cases yet. I think that will come hopefully by the end of the year, you know, probably, and it just depends on any sexual assault cases that are reported. And so that's basically my report, do you have any questions for me?
I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
2.5, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Extension Agent Ms. Alisa Cruz for the month of March 2023.
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Good morning. So for the month of March, I hosted a private place design applicator training, had foreign attendance, doing really well. I attended my monthly meetings, voyage club meetings, or current meeting, and the life association board meeting. I've been trying to work with specialists to schedule them to have a spring landscape workshop for anyone in the county that wants to attend. Date is still pending on that, so that's in the works. I did attend the Buckskin Brigade meeting, that was actually the first meeting I attended that I've never heard of Buckskin Brigade, but it's a leadership camp for kids grade seven through 12, I believe. They do team building and shooting sports safety identification, so I was invited to that, and I got to kind of see more or less what it was about. Also, for the month of March, I advertised my April event, which was the multi-county waterway screening that I just had. I also had the agriculture symposium, but I'll talk about that at my next reporting. I also attended a team's meeting for the District Club events that we host, so that is agents in our district were assigned to different events that we had to attend to either be on the finding or support committee, just to let you know, because I know sometimes it comes up on my reports, I just wanted to let them know that was. But that's it, I wanted to ask for you guys, so any questions?
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Cruz. Discussion and appropriate action, approval of travel for County Extension Agent Ms. Alisa Cruz to attend the South Region Program Planning Conference, May 16 through the 18 in San Antonio. Motion by Commissioner Du Lacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Cruz. 2.7, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from FCH Agent Ms. Clarissa Monius for the month of March.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So for the month of March, I attended quite a few trainings, one being the Cookie Well for Diabetes Training in Kingsville, which is a program that teaches people on how to eat and live a healthier lifestyle when they have diabetes, and I'm hoping to implement that program in June or in August. I also attended a state meeting for our Texas Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences. We are gearing up for a Texas State Conference in July and a national conference in September, so I want a few committees to plan that. So those meetings have been taking quite a bit of some time in these past few months. I did have two programs that started in March, one being the Color Me Healthy Nutrition Program that is taking place at a daycare here in our county, and that will finish up in May. And then we also completed the Growing and Nourishing Healthy Communities Program that ended on the 18th of April, and I wanted to say thank you for attending that garden event that we had at the community garden, we really appreciate it. And we're hoping to do that program again in the fall, but to plant for spring crops. And then we're going to plan a harvesting, preserving the harvest program, where we'll hopefully take those vegetables and fruits, and people in the community can learn how to can them and preserve them, and so that'll be a class that'll be coming out in the fall as well. Coming up in May, we do have a conference in San Antonio. I have a few meetings scheduled about future programs for the summer with the Westingers and the Demet County Public Library, so lots to come in the next few months.
I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
I do want to mention one more thing, I'm not too sure, I put it in your packet if you have this flyer, so we're going to have a car seat inspection event in June, and I know it's kind of early, but I wanted to put it out there already, and we'll soon start advertising for it, but TexasAAM, Texas A&amp;M, our extension with Passenger Safety Kit, Safe Initiatives, and TexasAAM are going to be partnering together to offer this to the community. So we're going to have car seat inspectors, people will be able to just drive by the arena, the inspector will go and inspect your car seat and see if it's safe, if it's in all the right position, and it's going to be a really good event for our community, and if anybody needs a car seat, they'll be able to handle that as well, so a good event for our community.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. 2.8, discussion and appropriate action, approval of travel for FCH Agent Clarissa Monius to attend the South Region Program Planning Conference, May 16 through the 18 in San Antonio. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. 2.9, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 1, Ms. Sonia Guero Benes for the month of February and March 2023. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, just wanted to let you know that our staff, all of our secretaries or clerks are entering the citations manually until the transition from Southern Software and NTEC is finalized, and they said it would take about 90 days, so our staff is entering all the citations that are coming in manually from the Southern Software.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, on the report, the number... I'll have to follow up, I... What is, which one is it, for February or March?
This is March.
Okay. Is it the Office of the Board?
Maybe just the writing for printing.
Oh, I see. It just, it just looks like, yeah, it got cut off.
Okay, I'll have her reprint it and submit it. Okay, thank you.
2.1, zero, discussion, monthly report from JP Precinct 2, Alberto Esquivel for the month of February and March 2023.
Motion to table.
Motion to table by Commissioner Du Lacava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.11, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 3, Letizia Hernández for the month of March.
Motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Second? Second by Commissioner Du Lacava. Any discussion? Just for the record, I've been advised that she is not here today because she did have a doctor's appointment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. 2.12, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precinct 4, Mr. Alfredo Montina for the month of March 2023.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Mr. Montina, Judge. Motion by Commissioner Ureda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion?
Your report, Judge, although the numbers are cut off right here. Same thing?
I think it's a printer issue, there's a printer issue. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. 2.13, discussion and appropriate action, approval of travel for JP 4, 5, and 7, Clerk Marina Carmona to attend the 2023 New Clerk Seminar, August 6 through 9 in Austin, Texas. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ureda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes?
Do you know where she'll be staying?
I'm not sure.
In the dorm room on the photo's correct.
Yes, I'm going to look over it, but...
I don't think there's any for $50.
No, I don't think so.
I want her to stay on $50.
Yeah, but I'm surprised, because everything, the training center should provide everything, the whole community, so let me look into it, and I'll get back with you on that.
Once you get that information, Judge, if you can pass it to my office, and then we can forward that to the Commissioners.
Okay, that sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention?
I have a second.
One abstention by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
2.14, monthly report from District Clerk Ms. Mari Santa Gonzalez for the month of March 2023. Motion to table by Commissioner Du Lacava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.15, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of March and February, February and March 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda, any discussion?
Judge.
Yes, sir.
Just want to add, in particular, the February report, if you notice the line that defines...
Yes, sir.
That's the result of our court dossier.
Thank you very much.
Yes, takes about a combination of all the help from all the three offices, but I was really impressed with that, and I think it made a big difference that we had the credit card stationed up there, so like, okay.
Yes, sir, I think it's been, we've had a very efficient county court, and I think the numbers reflect that, and I think Mr. Pereira would be very proud of the county courts for bringing in revenue to Demet County via...
I want to comment, Judge.
...clients.
And I don't like to bring it up this early in the morning, but we have issues with the restrooms and all courtrooms.
I'm getting a plumber for this, because we tried to fix it by our staff, but I'm getting some numbers to get in place.
I really?
And I'm pretty ready to give me a call, because...
Remember...
If I know about it, then I'll have to go to somebody else.
Yeah, are we second name or...
No, we're connected with the server. But here's, I am working on it, but if any issues, give me a call, otherwise I don't have to go crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries.
Judge, we're also running trouble with water pumps, so I'm trying to get this all right around here.
2.16, discussion and appropriate action, approval of travel for County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia to attend the 128th Annual County and District Clerks Texas Conference in McAllen, Texas, for June 19 through the 23. Motion by Commissioner Du Lacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you. 2.17, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from the County Commissioners for the month of March 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda. We will amend that motion to, and I'll entertain an amended motion to approve precincts 1, 3, excuse me, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7, and table precinct.
So move.
3 and 6. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second? Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Demet County Golf Course for the month of 2023. Morning, Mr. Hyman.
For January, we had two events, for February, we had one event, for March, we had two events, and then for January, the rules brought in was $8,912.47, for February was $11,956.83, and for March, it was $20,089.40.
Can you guys send your reports?
Yeah, we have...
Yes, because I have like 20 of them.
Yes.
I put triple copies, make sure everybody... I did want to mention that our...
Give me one second, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Double.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion?
Our golf course consultant, a gentleman there, physician for another company, that is the reason Mr. Mike is serving at the parson.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. 2.19, discussion and appropriate action, quarterly report from the utility department for the month of March 2023.
This was for the water system, and Escantosa, and Catarina, and Grandi. You want me to read all the...
We can read it, Mr. Hyman. I entertain a motion.
So...
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lacava, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. 2.20, discussion and appropriate action to hire replacement for the golf course. Go ahead, Commissioner.
You want to?
Judge, that's the position that we're talking about.
I entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona, is there a second?
A fool to hire replacement, can you already have somebody, or if he's going to look for somebody?
We're looking for someone.
And then you'll bring it back, or?
Yeah, we just do...
Can I wrap the word, please?
I don't think for advertising, but advertising, you don't have to...
You don't have to...
Unless you have somebody that you're going to hire.
This is a very secure courtesy statement, they can let the court know that the position is open, in case anybody asks anybody that's interested.
Then there's no action.
Do I have nothing to read here?
No. No. No action, no action taken.
When you hire, you...
That's what I'm asking, do you already have somebody? You said, no, you're advertising, letting the people know that you're going to hire somebody, so then really there's no action until you have somebody that you're going to hire, then you bring it back to me.
Did you hire someone?
Just that you hired someone, you don't... 2.21 Discussion and Appropriate Action Request to Purchase a 2024 CTS Bottom Dump Trailer from Brookner's Trucking and Equipment for Precinct 2. Motion by Commissioner Noguacava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, discussion?
Aye.
You can, if you want, you don't have to...
Just in case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? One abstention, Mr. Carmona is abstaining. 2.2 I'll entertain a motion to table.
Some more.
Motion by Commissioner Noguacava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.23 Approval for Hendrickson Road Tax Dot C T I F Program Project for Construction Completion.
Good morning, Judge and Court, I'm Dan Hale with Hale Land Solutions, I'm here to present the site. Vega Peggy has completed the construction activities on Hendrickson Road. I made the final site observation, it's not conscious that they've taken care of, and they submitted a final pay request on their record drawing to prepare how to build to live there. I also checked the profiles on the road, that everything looked good to us, so we're recommending that the court consider approving. It's being completed, this is part of the C T I F tax dot program, so the judge will be following the proper type of work, ask before giving permission to sign that type of work. I'll be glad to answer any questions when I'm done.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Dan, have you met with Mr. Carmona for the concession of this? He's not here today, so I wouldn't wanna approve it.
Yes.
It doesn't do with you yet.
Yes, I had talked to him, in fact, two weeks ago, when we were gonna take it to court, I had made a final site observation, ended up with the commissioner in the morning, ended up with the contractor in the afternoon. He didn't make it to that, maybe he said he didn't need to, so I think he is fine for this, thank you, Commissioner.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention? Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman.
I might give this to the county clerk, this is a certificate of construction completion act.
For my signature, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
2.24 Approval of Travel for IT Marcos Mendez to Attend the 2023 County Technology Conference, May 16 through the 19 in Round Rock, Texas. I'll entertain a motion to table.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Noguacava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona, Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.25 Discussion and Appropriate Action Request to Purchase a 2024 CTS Bottom Dump Trailer from Brookner's Trucking and Equipment for Precincts 4, 5, and 7.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
On our, 'cause your budget, I have a funding to purchase the...
The MAC.
So this would be...
The attachment to it?
With our capital funding.
Capital only.
Capital only, so I can...
Motion by Commissioner Noguacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 2.26 Discussion and Appropriate Action Travel for Commissioner Precinct 4, 5, and 7, Valerie Noguacava to Attend the 2023 TAG Legislative Conference in Austin, Texas in August. I'll entertain a motion.
Some more.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? There will mention to the court as part of the discussion that I highly recommend that all the commissioners attend, it's a legislative update, so that we can keep abreast of the laws that are ever changing in our court.
Can we still sign up, please?
Yes, you can, it's not till August.
So I have to...
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.27 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief Mr. David Thodos for the month of March.
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
As you can see, the month of March, we had a total of 11 calls, two motor vehicle accidents, and also a animal rescue that we did on the basis of March hearing, curio.
That might dawn on us during...
No.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Noguacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Thodos.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval of Travel for County Judge Mataponce to Attend the 2023 TCDRS Annual Conference, July 20 in Austin, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Noguacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.29 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Transfer Code Enforcer from Sheriff's Office to the County Judge. I'll entertain a motion.
Some more.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just to let you know, when the code enforcer comes up, we bought a pickup, a pickup, especially for him to...
To utilize. Yes, thank you for that information, Commissioner, I did discuss with Mr. Bereda last week, and he did advise me that at the time that Commissioners Court approved that position, a truck was also approved for the use of the code enforcer.
Do we have a code enforcer or not yet?
Not yet. My hopes are that we get one here within the next weeks or two, simply because I know you're having issues in Catarina, and I know some of the commissioners are having issues with their parks, so my hope is that we can hire somebody pretty fast here so that we can get them either trained or get them set up so that they can be to the services of the court. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval to Renew the Declaration of Local State of Disaster Illegal Immigration.
Christine had left that there, it was due and made.
Is it in here?
It's in the source.
Mr. Garcia? You have that?
We all have it.
You have it?
No, I took it with me first.
Oh, I have it. I'm a little blind today, aside from being... I'll entertain a motion.
Some more.
That the Dimmitt County Commissioners Court, by the signature of the Dimmitt County Judge, declare Dimmitt County as a county part of the local state of disaster for the illegal immigration occurring in our borders with Mexico. I'll entertain a motion, I believe Commissioner Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Question?
I believe that it's for the...
Year?
Yeah, it's for the year, let me correct, yes, 365 days, so for the year. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. 3.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action Status Report, is this a status report from the Sheriff's Office or the jail?
The jail, we tabled it.
The jail? Oh, we tabled it, that's on your rate.
Good morning, Chris.
Morning. Morning, Ms. Mendez. Motion by Commissioner Noguacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion?
We received a new marshal...
Great, great.
So try and work every house and get some more.
Great.
So our account right now is at 34, Marshall.
And I noticed on your report that you also hired another gentleman.
Yes, ma'am, and he already had his temper and his license already, jail license, he took it on his own, so I hired him.
Perfect.
We lost one, but you gained one.
Are we still short staffed, nonetheless?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mendez, is the marshal inspection, will we ignore your results? We, I did took some pictures and showed them what we did the new inspection, what we had to change, so we're just waiting for him to call us back. Hopefully by next week we'll hear something.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mendez, thank you, Mr. Arrieta.
Thank you all.
Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from our County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz, for the month of March 2023.
Good morning, Judging Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report for this month, I guess you could say it's kind of in two parts, I have my normal treasurer's report, and then I also have the quarterly investment report that's required by the local government. I'm gonna start with the treasurer's report first. The first page is the same thing as usual, all the bank accounts and the balances of all of them, none of them are in red, so unlike last month, just because of the timing of the month, and we currently have close to $27 million in the bank in here, the first day bank, and then the second page is just a snapshot of payroll for the month of March. And March is one of those months where we have three pay periods, so that's why you see that here. And then just also, this past week, I was at a training for the, it was the annual treasurer's seminar, and I just wanted to go over a few things I learned real quick. I guess the first thing I should mention, because we had a training on being able to relate with other county officers, and I just wanted to, I guess, extend kind of like a olive branch and reassure you all that I'm not here to argue with anybody or upset anybody, and I'm just here to intend to do what is right, and that is what I will continue to do. And if there's any time, if there's any problems or anything, my office is always open, and we can always have a good conversation about anything that happens. And the second thing was, I learned a new thing about payroll, and I haven't necessarily figured out how to do it yet, but basically, except for law enforcement, if you take your county vehicle home that has a taxable value, and I'm not too sure if anybody takes their county vehicle home, but I know we don't currently take that out of anybody who does, so if anybody does take their county vehicle home, that is, that's not law enforcement, we have to take the taxes on that value.
What they've done, actually have done, is based the mileage into the W-2 at the end of the year, hopefully get a tax on it.
If we're doing that, that's...
I don't know, how many people try to do it, but that's what, suppose we have it.
Okay.
They should be there, because we take, we do the logs on a daily basis.
Should, correct.
It's okay.
Then if we're using the modeling rule for the IRS, then we don't have to worry about the commute tax on it. And then the second thing was, I was gonna bring it up just because it was mentioned earlier in a different agenda item that I learned from TAG, their legal and HR specialist. Whenever a new position is, whenever a department hires a new person, it's not required to be approved by Commissioners Court. It is, it can be a courtesy, like, just to let the court know that, A, I hired a new person, but it's not necessarily required, because then if it is, that opens up, Commissioners Court just will not approve the hiring, and how can Commissioners Court not approve somebody to be hired for a different department? Because at the budget time, it was approved for however many positions, you know, for that department, and it's the elected official's responsibility to make sure those positions are filled and to make sure they don't go over the budget anyway, and that is actually the time whenever the elected official has to, Community Court, if they want to, like, add a position, or if they wanna change some, like, a budgetary line, like, how much they wanna get paid. So that's one of, and I guess my treasurer's report for that part.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
And then on the investment report, so what's been previously happening was, it was kind of being reported on a rolling quarter, but the statutes say I have to give just one every quarter, so the first page of it, y'all have that one, correct, the investment report? So the front page just summarizes the quarter, and then the pages afterwards kind of go into a detail about the quarter and all the withdrawals and all the interest earned and the current balances, and it's required that, since me and Ms. Crayler are investment officers, we are both supposed to sign it, but because of our schedules, we were able to get together, because you were gone one week, and then I was gone this past week for a training, so that's why, I don't think, did you turn in the one, would you say?
Yes.
Okay, then we're good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Noguacava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any other discussion?
I, Judge, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm still not clear on the, when you're driving your vehicle home, and you mentioned something about the W-2? Well, how does, how the...
The mileage, you're supposed to be plodding around it, right? So what the treasurer does at the end of the year, he just takes all the mileage for the year, and multiplies by the IRS rate, and that's what he puts on your W-2.
Oh, so you're paying taxes, like, if I'm driving, you're paying taxes before you go?
You'll pay taxes on it, right? It is taxable, man.
But it's already done on your W-2, is what you're saying.
I turned in a mileage on the truck, but how do you specify if I don't drive it home? Like, you'll be taxed on it?
You don't try to home, no.
So, you don't do it in our truck?
No, whoever takes it home, are the people that get, that train the mileage, and those are the ones who pay taxes. You go to the yard at the end of the day, and it doesn't...
You know, who takes your vehicle home, who does?
We have, we should be packing a log in our office.
I know, but see, the log doesn't... I'm a bit confused, the log... I know, but see, the log, I'm a bit so confused, the log stays, like if I, from here to Bentrant Road, I got a log.
Right.
But how do you know if I'm actually taking it home?
Because you're supposed to be logging at the end of the day home.
Oh, okay. I was just, I was trying to get clarification. I got it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1, thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
4.2, discussion of appropriate action, financial report from Mr. Carlos Pereira, county auditor for the month of March 2023.
Through the end of March, we have collected $16 million, $16,559,000.
16?
16. One, six, five, five, nine, thousand, million, sorry, million, I'm sorry.
You want to start all over?
Yeah. We've collected $16 million, 559,000. We had budgeted $19 million, 293,000. So we've collected, we've still got 40% remaining, but we should pretty much hit that, close to that amount. There are several case, several line items. For instance, we have already gone over the current taxes. The sales tax is projected to be over, over by the end of the year, by over a million. The only place that we are having a problem is in detention orbits, and that one we're going to be under. But everything else is on target to, for what we projected. As far as expenditures are concerned, through the end of March, we had spent $7 million, 943,000. So we've already collected enough to pay for expenses for the year.
Any discussion?
Motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. I had a question, Mr. Pereira, you said that there was one that we were going to be under?
The detention orbits, the prisoners, the jail.
That's with the marshals? Is it the marshal's board?
Correct. We were projecting, we had gone to be very conservative, 175,000. I hope there will be remaining that. But everything else is going to make up for that, so we should be way over on everything else.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion on appropriate action, approval of travel for county auditor Carlos Pereira to attend County Auditors Institute, May 1st through the 5th, 2023, in College Station. Motion by Commissioner De Vucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carmona. Any discussion? Mr. Pereira, this is split in half, correct? By Demet and Savala County? Okay. So the total that Demet County would be paying is the 818?
881.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. On the claim docket, we have the general fund at $837,767.74. Demet County Airport, $3,917.44. Demet County Golf Course, $10,172.46. Courthouse Security, $1,575.63. Records Management, $920.22. Utilities, $49,453.92. Rodeo Arena, $700. Stone Garden, $31,000, excuse me, $31,8043. Demet County Payroll was $417,345.67. CDBG Colonia was $4,500. CO's 2015 is $3,787. CO's 2018 is $126,127.91. CO's 2019 was $3,989.88. And CO's 2022 was $439,472, for a grand total of $1,930, $930,000, excuse me, $801.20. I'll entertain a motion.
Is this another one?
That's the public.
That's the public, the Department of Public Safety, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner De Vucava. Motion by Commissioner De Vucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Just now, any executive session matters? I do have an addendum for 4.1, discussion and appropriate action, to submit the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Resolution and applications for a Colonia Construction Fund, CFC 23-0377, grant request of $1 million for Catarina Water and Sewage in the county of Demet.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Vucava. Any discussion? In this one, Commissioners, I'm just, I put it on the agenda to authorize me as the county judge to sign that resolution, so that application can be submitted, so that Demet County can apply for a $1 million grant that would be utilized for Catarina, for precincts 4, 5, and 7, or just precinct in Catarina, which is precinct 7, for the continuation of the water and sewage in Demet County for Catarina. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, I think this is, you were going to this one, this is, I think we're on the edition that we, we have a year, I mean, after we closed another one.
No, the, where? Where?
This one here? That's what I was questioning.
Oh, this one. I'm going to reopen on the claim docket to include the CTIF text dot infrastructure in the amount of $441,525.10. CO of 2018 is $3,878.35, for a grand total of $445,403.45. I'll entertain a motion to amend the original claim docket.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda. Second by Commissioner De Vucava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition? Motion carries. The time is 11:05, and I'm going to open the meeting for the Public Facilities Agenda roll call. As let the record reflect, the same individuals here, one absent, Commissioner Juan Carmona. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, March 13, 2023. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion regarding those meetings, minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1, discussion of appropriate action, new business. Table, I'll take a motion to table, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner De Vucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.1, discussion of appropriate action, monthly report. Mr. Pereira.
You should have your, in your package. So through March, we have $12,970 in expenditures. Well, I'm sorry, we have $1,970,000, but $1 million of that is for the building, which the transaction has not gone through. We actually had done the check for that, but it's on hold, so that has not been completed at this point. So the expenditures are $97,000, and revenues that we have recorded in the public facilities is $141,000, $145,000.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner De Vucava, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Claim docket, public safety was $15,018.63. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner De Vucava. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today, because the meeting has ended.